Oh, no.
This is seven.
Seven to five.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order of the Huntington Township Board of Supervisors. At this time, I'd like to state we had an executive session on March 18th to discuss a personnel matter, so I just wanted everybody to notify that about returns. Okay, next item is public comment for agenda items. Anything? Comments? Hearing none.
Is this the time for the fire prevention ordinance?
No.
No?
No, we're just...
Can't talk on that?
That'll be... We're actually... We'll have a hearing for that at a later point. And, okay, thank you. Okay, this time, we're going to recess for the Ag Security Area Advisory Board meeting to discuss the addition and approve the Hollinger ASA addition. So, Mr. Retsch, you're on the committee, correct?
Yes.
The supervisors, the planning commission looked at the request and they took action, is that correct?
That's... yes.
Okay. Mr. Retsch, you have any comments?
No.
The planning commission recommended approval of the addition. The county looked at it as well.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there any public comment or questions about the addition? Gentlemen?
I'll make a motion that we accept certification for the Hollinger Ag Secure District, Ag Security Area.
Okay, one second. They move in second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Now, we reconvene at a regular meeting. And now, we can take action, action on a recommendation from the ASA board. Do we need to have another hearing for that?
Yeah.
Okay.
We have to advertise it, so can't be told that.
Okay, so now, the board will take action on the recommendation of the ASA. So, I will make a motion that we set a time and approve for a hearing of the addition of the Hollinger property, the Ag Security Area.
I'm second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Okay.
You can do it at the main meeting.
Correct. Okay, this time, we will have a public hearing on the advertised, proposed fire prevention and fire protection ordinance that was advertised in the paper. Before we get started, I'd just like to comment on it. The... This has been discussed for a while, correct, gentlemen, last year?
Yes.
And I think the reason for this is, one of us dry last year, there's a question about fire bans and putting ordinance, and we did not have an ordinance to legally put a ban in. Okay, so due to that, we drew up an ordinance to do so if we choose to, when we choose to. And clearly, it will not be a unilateral decision. It will be based on, you know, recommendations from the fire company, the county, those type of things. So, it is not a burn ban. It's not saying people can't burn. It's just telling them how to do it safely to protect property in the township. It's also like it would become the situation where we think we need to put a burn ban in, and then we have the right to do so. Okay, anything else you'd add there?
Uh, no, but I just put out the words advertised in the paper for adoption tonight, so it's part of the public hearing. Then, any comment from the public, so...
Now, do you have a comment, Mr. Griffey?
Yeah, I don't think anybody in this room has a problem with a burn ban.
Okay.
But it... Where did this other stuff come from? Smoking odors?
Yeah, how are you supposed to talk about smoking odor?
Hey, how could you can't? The definitions seem way broad. How much smoke is it a momentary? And what's a normal, typical human being? I mean, it looks to... It just sounds to me that the only people that's going to make any money off of this will be attorneys if you enforce it like it's written. I mean, it just doesn't make any sense. The burn ban's fine. I'm not against that, but this other stuff, we don't need that. We're a rural community. And again, the real kicker is you have friends and neighbors. You want to fine them $1,000. It's in somebody's opinion that it's too strong.
Yeah, but wait a minute. That's not an agricultural, agricultural, they want it.
Yeah, they can burn whatever they want. So, I can get arrested for a fire, and a guy across the road from me can have a pile of stumps burning for a week and smoking and smoldering, and he's okay. It makes no sense. Just, we're a small rural community. We don't need this. Cities need burn ordinance. We don't, except for the draft. That's all.
Thank you. Yes?
I too agree with the gentleman. Like odors and smokes, smoke that would be offensive. Who defines what's offensive? That's very, very broad, and like he said, you're going to have a neighbor that gets ticked, maybe, that has moved in or whatever, and then we have the issue of how is that defined? How is... What is an offensive odor?
Okay.
There's just no... And when this was discussed, it was actually discussed for a burn ban.
When it's dry out.
I've been attending these meetings, and I have never heard that this was going to be an ordinance as far as any kind of other regulations, quite frankly.
Okay. Do you have any comment?
Uh, I mean, this has been proposed for a fair amount of time. It went to the planning commission and was discussed there, and we made some changes based on what they said, and this is what was proposed.
Yeah, so you think it's fair to put a sentence in there like that that pretty much says you can stop anybody from burning anything? That's how I take that.
If it's a ban because it's dry out, which is way I understand this, was I was actually on the board
when this was presented, it's so the township can put a ban on when it's dry out, so that we don't cause fires and we work with the fire company. It gives us authority to do so. But the way you have this written is just like you write everything else in this township, like we're in some big city or something. You know, if someone just needs to burn something, I call into the county if I want to burn a pile of brush. I just did it last week, and I get permission from the county. The county gives me the good. But now, when I look at this, I could risk you guys upsetting somebody in the neighborhood, and you all agreeing with that, and then I got a $1,000 fine.
Well, I guess, as I read this, I understand what you're saying, but I don't agree with what you're saying. Because I read this as that any fire that you light now have to be supervised by an adult, which I think is the reason.
I have no problem with that.
Okay, I think that all fires must be entirely extinguished and not permitted to burn or smolder. So, that means you extinguish it correctly, so you don't leave it unattended. That's how I read that. No fires or burning shall create excessive odor or excessive smoke. I...
That should be taken out, or...
Well, you know, I hear what you're saying, but if somebody's burning tires or burning something that's offensive...
You can't burn tires. But they do.
You don't know.
But they do. But I guess...
And who does?
So, you know, I think, and clearly, I don't think anybody in this room's going to go out and say, "Oh, jeez, that guy's burning, and we're going to fine him now." That is not the intent, as I... You know, I think...
So then, what is the intent?
Intent is to give us the opportunity to put a burn ban on and to eliminate it. The county...
When it's dry out?
Yeah, when it's dry.
Yes. I think what this says...
This is certainly what it says. The county did that...
That ain't even what it says. I'm sorry.
The county did that to a certain point. They gave it up because they have no fire marshals, so the municipalities have to take it on themselves.
Well, like I said, I agree with them.
The only section that's not part of the burn ban is Section 7.4, which is what I just read, about, you know, it should be extinguished, it should be monitored, it should not create excessive odor or excessive smoke. I mean, that's the... And no fire should be located in a place where it can endanger any structure building or other property.
And I have no problem with that. I mean, that's common sense, but there's some things in here that aren't common sense. And then, you give the agricultural, which is where 90% agricultural, you give them the exemption from it.
From entirely 7.4, where it doesn't have to be attended, and yet, they're burning a lot of stuff.
Yeah, well...
And it's just common sense to... It's just common sense to the average person. What you're doing here is because somebody may be stupid enough to burn tires, you're saying, "Well, you know what? We're going to have, we're going to have to restrict everybody else because that may happen."
Yeah, but it doesn't matter what you're burning, because if it smells or smells...
No, and that's why I said, "What is offensive smell?"
The ordinance.
What's an offensive smell?
Well, that's what the statute says.
An offensive smell or excessive odor would probably be considered a nuisance under the nuisance ordinance.
Under... I'm sorry, I didn't hear...
Under the nuisance ordinance, and I don't believe Gus is running around citing people under the nuisance ordinance for excessive odors and excessive smells.
Agricultural burning is usually done in a hole, where most people who burn their brush are doing it in their yard, and they can get away from it.
Right.
Yeah, so what you're saying is now that I can't burn brush in my yard?
You know, that's not the case. I mean, you know, that is not the case at all. I think, you know, logically, if creating excessive odor or excessive smoke, I think that's what most, that's what reasonable people would think would be excessive smoke and excessive odor. I mean, that's how I...
My neighbor's been cleaning up that property across the street from me, and he's been smickering me out for a year.
Yeah.
Okay, and all he's burning is brush. Okay, now, so...
And we all accepted that because he's cleaning up the property, but yet...
But now, you're saying I could call you on the phone and say, "Hey, you know what? This guy's excessively smoking me out." Okay, and I can come in here and complain, and then you're going to... Then you should be applying your ordinance then to that person. That's all I'm getting at. I understand, I understand all the rules. I get all that, because the county tells you the same thing. 50 feet from any structure, watch it during it. I get all that. I have no problem with that. It's that one line.
And a couple of years ago, I had called up about recycling, et cetera, and I spoke to Adams County, and I forget the woman's name because it was at least six years ago. She told me she expected a complete... She said, "Oh, this is ridiculous how people burn stuff on their properties. We want to get rid of that." So, is that what this is all about?
Absolutely not.
I don't think that's what it's about.
No, but you know, to your point, there are a lot of towns and a lot of municipalities who can have a burn ban.
Correct.
You know, and you're required to have a garbage service, and we do not have that in this township, but I'm not imposing that.
But this seems very... The definitions, there's no definitions of it, of what an offensive... Like, you could have a neighbor that complains of an offensive odor that... I mean, people burn brush and stuff of that sort.
There is a definition for excessive odor and excessive smoke. It says odor or smoke that would be offensive to the typical human being, and which prevails longer than momentarily, so...
Momentarily, which means what exactly? Momentarily is of one moment.
And what's a typical human being?
So, who defines that? Who said, "Oh, you didn't get that out quick enough because it wasn't a moment"? I'm not, I'm not getting with this, these definitions.
Well, just...
And I think it should be clear because you're instituted a $1,000 fine to people.
That would have to be proven in front of a magistrate or district attorney. And just as far as saying longer than momentarily, if somebody calls in that a fire is burning with excessive smoke and excessive odor, somebody from the township gets word of it, in order to enforce it, they're going to have to go out and visually see that there's excessive smoke and excessive odor. So, if it takes however long it is for it to call in, then get out there, and if it's still billowing, you know, smoke like crazy, I would consider that probably would be excessive.
That's any time you burn a pile of brush. I mean, it excessively smokes. I mean, that's what it does.
But there is a typical amount of smoke associated with fire. That doesn't mean excessive.
But that's what I mean. Where is the limit on these, on these definitions? Where is the limit of excessive? What would you, what does the average person consider excessive? Because that's all in perception. And when you're going to court, when you're going before a magistrate, how does the person say, "Well, no, I didn't think it was offensive. It wasn't excessive smoke, and it wasn't an offensive smell"? How does someone actually defend themselves against that?
Well, most, like standards for nuisances, it's like offensive to a...
But this isn't nuisance. This is a...
Can I finish speaking, please?
Yeah.
Most nuisance ordinances and things like this, they say offensive to a reasonable person or typical human being. And basically, what that is, when you go to the judge, is they're basically going to probably interpret it however they want, and they're going to put their judgment in there. We can't write an ordinance that specifies a specific amount that is considered excessive. I don't know how you say this much smoke is excessive, or this much.
So, why would we have that quantity?
Well, that's what I mean. This is what this is the...
Okay, let, excuse me. Let's, we're going to table this ordinance for now, unless there's any other public comment that's different than the opinions I've heard so far. We're tabled until...
I'll make that motion on the table. This is so important to further investigation into the way through.
Okay, they're second. They move in second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries.
Okay, I have a question now. Does that mean you're sending it back to the planning commission?
It means we're tabling it for now, and we're not making a decision at this point.
Okay, but if you do send it back to the planning commission, you're allowed to...
Correct. Correct. Okay, moving on. Secretary trade report. The minutes were distributed from the March 14th. Is there any questions or comments on them?
I have none.
Okay.
Make motion, we accept the minutes as written.
They move in secretary, discussion. They say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries.
No.
Fill this. Is there a bill list for anyone?
No.
Okay, I'll make a motion, we approve bill list for second.
On second, yeah.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Financial report.
Okay, the financial report still needs adjusting whenever we get all the auditor comments and that interest thing straightened out. But until then, the general fund, we actually had, can I say it? Our grant was approved, and we did receive $122,000 for the Greenbrier Road. We have to put it in our general fund, and we have to keep our bills separate for it, but it, you know, it is like, it's there. It looks like it may be inflated, but it's not because, you know, it is a grant. So, the total receipts on, in the general fund was $180,958.80. Expenditures were $32,794.60. That lets a total in the general fund of $911,254. And the ARP interest received, $18.77. Expenditures were $5,640. That lets a total in the ARP of $217,264.52. And in the state fund, interest received was $14.82. Our bills were $11,041.41. That lets $163,173.39 as balance in there, of which $23,333.74 is an equipment balance. So, the, all the accounts says of today is $1,291,440.45. And the financial report's not up there? Okay. Well, there I went and dug out the one year ago, five years ago, and 10 years ago. The one year ago, our balance was $1,438,333.40. Five years ago, it was $1,209,000. And 10 years ago, it was $1,071,000. So, we made it through the, you know, emergency there for the pandemic, and we're looking good, I think. Oh, and there is our York Adams Tax Bureau. That's a comparison from year to year. And there it mentions the pandemic also. Betsy Howard had asked about it. She's not here, but... That's one month for the last since 2018.
Any questions on the financial report? Okay, thank you. Miscellaneous items. There's a notice in disposal with the school complex on Saturday to 27th, from April 10 to 2. Any other miscellaneous items? For advanced report.
We've done six school replacements this month already. We did sweep the intersections and blow the intersections up. And also, I want to entertain the thought of acquiring a new snowplow truck. I've got quotes on them. They're averaging anywhere between $200,000 to $245,000, depending on chassis manufacturer and so forth. We're going to have to replace the Mack here eventually, and they're within about... If I order one now, it's two years till we get one. They're back two years, so... So, I'd like to entertain the thought of, since we're out two years till we receive one.
Right.
Well, that's all I have.
Any questions? Okay. Supervisor report, anything?
I have nothing.
The neighbor there that had the chauffeur and the tires, that's gone, so you should clean that up.
I received the call from her thanking us for taking care of that, so she appreciated the letter and the conversation with that, so thank you for doing that. I did attend the council government meeting the other week, so did attend that. And Pat shows some information from the York Adams Tax Bureau. I called those people, had a few questions about our income and our, you know, percentages and this type of thing, so I got some information from them, which I thought was interesting. It actually shows we have less, we have a decline in taxpayers for the last 10 years, but the average income has been going up every year, so has our taxes by that. So, it means the people that are paying taxes, our income has increased in our township, which would make sense to me. It was interesting to look at that data. I thought it was interesting.
That's our working budget on the new...
Yeah. zoning officer Gus?
Yeah. It's been a busy month, and... We, I issued five building permits and one waiver of letter. And the first one was to Jim Angel up here on Farm New Road for rooftop solar units. Now, Bob Rockview over in the Idaho York Springs Road, that's on the corner of Torway Road and the Idaho Road. He's putting building a 7-by-10 foot deck addition with a roof over it. They issued a waiver to Josh McHugh on 1266 Stunt Club Road. He's got the retaining wall that's caving in, and he wants to remove it and fill it in. It's the drive that goes down into a basement garage. Steve and Karen Lavand on 685 White Church Road, they've got a permit to build a 12-by-16 foot shed. Garman Builders of 150 Tammy Drive, this is the third house going in to finish up Bowling Springs. They're going to build a two-story house. And Tony Tafani, she lives on the corner of Oxford Road and Cranberry Road, and she's going to replace the deck on the house, 14-by-26 foot. She has an existing deck, but it's old. She wants to replace it. And I accepted three subdivisions. We've been fighting around with these for at least six months. It's the Heebner Wyand. It's an add-on lot. It's on Oxford Road, and we could have the paperwork for this at the planning commission meeting this month, and then we'll, it should be sent to the supervisor. Richard Allen Hartley on the Carlisle Pike, this is part of a, he bought a property from Hershey, and Hershey wanted it back because he sold his wife's tennis court, and she wants it back. So, we're re-subdiving it to get the tennis court back in their possession, and we'll be dealing with that. I, it's going to, the earliest it's going to be is this next planning commission meeting. And also, accepted a subdivision for the Lobaw Lobaw and Buff property, which is on Cranberry Road, the former Geis farm. And they're going to subdivide and keep the parent track to subdivide two lots off One Street to the daughters. So, that's in the works. It's been a busy month. A lot of questions. I have a gentleman who's looking at that sliver of property on South Ridge Road. He wants to propose a use that's not provided for. I told him to come to the next planning commission meeting and present a sketch plan and explain what he's proposing. So, we'll let him make the decision. And that's about it. A lot of the calls discovered they had a property on the Oxford Road, 5 acres, that doesn't have a septic system. Won't perk. 5 acres, so. They, they're calling in a soil scientist. We have several properties like that around the township. Both in the question, a lot of the things were reported 40, 50 years ago. Anyway, we'll deal with it. That's about all I got.
Thank you. Any questions for Gus? Thank you. Engineers report, Scott. I'm sorry. Solicitor's report.
I don't have anything to report. I'm going to let somebody in. You know what you're going to...
Scott, engineer report.
Greenbrier Road Culver, DEP permit was submitted last month, and we'll wait to hear back from them. Nothing new for Marsh Town Road Culver. Four Way Road Culver project, the permit application was submitted last month, and we'll wait to hear back from DEP for that. The update to the subdivision and revolving ordinance is ongoing. I have meeting with Andy at the county planning on Tuesday to go over that before the next planning commission meeting. And I received one plan for review this week, and I turned around and brought that back out to Gus for the Lobaw and Buff subdivision.
Okay.
Is this the proper time to find out about the dirt and gravel contract? They did approve that, correct?
Correct.
Yes, the grant, grant was approved, and check was issued to the township.
And it was for more than what we originally applied for, correct?
Because I have not seen...
Oh, okay.
I have not seen the funds. I was not part of that. But I do know it was over $100,000, and we were expecting about $100,000.
Okay.
Well, we got a hundred and twenty-two, I think so, eight, four thirty-nine, something like that.
And the, the FDR was wondering, the, the estimate for construction is right around, uh, two-hundred, two-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollar range.
I think that we should thank you and Chalk and Deb Muselman at the county.
And Deb Mus, wasn't she your contact person?
That's a lot of money. That's a lot of work.
From the conservation district. I mean, you know, all of you did a really great job in getting that. And that makes, makes a big difference.
Sure. Thank you. Any other questions?
When was the grant approved? Didn't you just say it was approved? I'm sorry.
We received payment.
I think it was the fourth, maybe?
March.
March, yeah.
Or April.
The, the final, uh, was the fourth of March. They, they did it on the thirtieth of March, and.
Fourth of April.
The, the, yeah, but, um, the twenty-eighth of March is when she met with the higher-ups in the soil code. That's when they approved it, but we did not receive till the fourth of March. Oh, yeah.
April.
Sorry. They approved it.
Because nothing was said.
Twenty-eighth of, when she had the, the meeting with the, the top brass of the soil conservation on the twenty-eighth of March, then they, um, approved it then. And then the fourth of April, we received, uh, payment for that. Thank you.
And, and I guess it's soon ready to be put out for bid?
Oh, yeah. The, the, the permit application to due to work is, has been submitted a month ago. So, I should be hearing from, uh, the state pretty soon about that. There's all these comments. So, make your vision, and I'll just submit it. As soon as we receive the permit.
Yeah.
I'll have everything ready for the township's final review, and then, then we can proceed.
Thanks a lot.
Fire company reports, Josh Nelson from UPMC.
So, I meant to get you the contract earlier, but, uh, basically, so if you all don't know me, I'm the chief for Adams County for Life Team. Um, we're the local handle service for Huntington, based here out of, uh, of York Springs. Um, we have five, uh, stations now in Adams County, which is the York Springs, Biglerville, uh, East Berlin, McSherrystown, or Sage Station, and now as a four-one, Littlestown. Um, that's, so now you basically have two handles companies in your, in your county now. That's Adams, that's Adams Regional EMS, and then through the Life Team EMS. Um, so basically, what I'm here to do today is, uh, take any questions. If you have any questions about Life Team EMS and where our services are that we provide. And then, uh, if you guys had any questions about, uh, it's hard to believe that we're already on our fourth year of, uh, service here in Adams County, uh, since we came in in two thousand and twenty. And then, uh, basically, the contract is open, but none of the verbs changed at all. Basically, it just makes us your primary ALS and BLS provider. Um, and then any monetary donations that you wish to make, that is your choice. Um, I don't, no knocking on township doors requesting or begging for money, but any support that you can give us is greatly appreciated. We're nonprofit, five oh one three C. I know I got the big sticker of, uh, of the UPMC giant on the side of my trucks, but that doesn't mean that, uh, I don't have a budget to follow. And I promise you that any handle bill that you get, uh, basically what we do is we take what your insurance gives, um, and then we don't balance bill that often at all, especially to our members or anyone else like that, so. Questions from anybody in the audience about your handle service? Any concerns?
No. I think we will take, we will read the contract then.
Yeah.
Your donation, we'll discuss that on our donation request. But we thank you for what you do.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Narima report, uh.
Narima has not yet met. Uh, it's been postponed for the last two months, so it's his own end of the agenda. It would be went in June the fifth, here in Huntington.
The question?
Question, yes?
I just wanted to check. I've been having to call a Franklin Township about the meeting, the public meeting. Why, there are seven townships that have an intermunicipality agreement. Why is it, and I checked even their websites. It's never announced that there's gonna be a Narima meeting on the website. So, I spoke with the, uh, directors, his name, Mr. Smith, if I'm not mistaken. I spoke, I had a long conversation with them because their website doesn't indicate when their meeting, meetings are gonna be, and they're public meetings. They're, they're under the Sunshine Act, I would, unless you, is there an exemption that they have?
I, I have no idea.
Because they do take taxpayer money and pay, like Franklin Township, the secretary now that's in charge, she actually gets money. Any kind of work she has to do it, it due, due for Narima. Because I, I got a copy of the Narima, uh.
Yeah, you got to ask Narima that question. I can't, I can't answer.
Yeah, I thought maybe, uh, Supervisor Geis would know.
No, I can't answer that.
Okay.
Mr. Smith is in charge. He would be the person to know.
He was, they were working on their own website, maybe.
They writ, they inherited a website that nobody could use, and they were working on getting it over there. Whether that has happened yet or not, I do not.
Well, they would still have to advertise their meetings in the paper.
He was concerned when I told him.
It is advertised in the paper.
It does go in the paper.
But they have a website. They have a website, and he was concerned too.
Discuss that with them, let me go.
Well.
I can't speak for them. None of us can speak for them.
This township's a part of that intergovernmental agreement. So, I'm surprised that none of you, like, I know, I guess, you haven't been supervisor for years, but Mr. Geis has been attending the meetings, but I'll take it up at the meeting of Narima, where, and give Mr. Smith the call again.
Old Business, the Greenbrier Project, the Myristown Project. That's already been taken care of. Uh, review and approve the proposed meeting recording policy resolution. That we discussed last meeting, I was not here.
This is just a policy, uh, that provides what happens with the recording of the meeting after the meeting. Basically, it'll be retained until the next meeting when the minutes are adopted. And then after that, it can be subsequently taped over or erased or otherwise destroyed. Unless the minutes aren't approved at the next meeting, then it'll stay on there until they're actually approved.
Any questions on that? Okay. Your motion?
Uh, go ahead. You can approve though. I just have a question for these, uh, attorney.
I make a motion to reapprove the meeting or recording policy.
I'll second that in the discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You have a question?
Yeah, last month it was on the agenda, and they tabled it for, um, remember, Pat, you had that thick, um, document from, about the Act for Retention of Municipal, uh, Documents?
Yeah.
Why isn't that included in here? Because Pat thought there was some sort of, uh, passage of retention policy here. Has none been found? And why aren't we going with this state?
It was, it's.
We are.
Was tabled last meeting, and we are still looking into it. That's why it did not come up this meeting.
We reviewed the book, and it was previously adopted. It was just, it was a misunderstanding between Pat and I. I thought they never formally adopted the Pennsylvania Municipal Records Manual.
Okay.
So, when we looked through the books, we found that it was adopted.
Do you know when it was adopted?
I didn't write that down. It was a while ago, wasn't it?
Like, two thousand and eight or something? Because in, I think it was in two thousand and eight, Mark and Terry, when, remember you took those three fifty-five gallon drums up to, uh, the county, had a shredding event? And you guys took them? It was way back, it was way back then.
Well, that lines up. That's when it was first released in two thousand.
Yeah. And aren't we, as a township, required to automatically conform to that?
I, I mean, yes, but pretty much every municipality has officially adopted it. I think they basically want you to make that recognition.
Thank you. Uh, review and approve contracts and donation requests for twenty twenty-four. So, we have a list of organizations we've donated to last year, as well as the fire company donations and the contracts that we have. The total donations, including the workers' comp for the fire companies, were fifty-one thousand nine hundred and seventy-two dollars last year.
And that's not a donation, that's a requirement?
That's a, yeah, the, the workers' comp's a requirement, but if you include that twenty-eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars in there, the total money spent was not fifty-one nine seventy-two.
Those columns are each a year?
Yeah, right.
And there's changes through the years.
If you look. Okay. We, we can, or we can just make a, a broad comment, uh, or motion.
I would suggest that the donations be the same as they were last year.
Okay. That's a motion?
Yeah, I can make a motion to cut out of there.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
They moved in second to leave the donations the way they were last year.
Well, this is donations, it's just the contract.
Yes.
And, yeah, including the contract.
No, just the donation.
Oh, just the donation, okay.
Okay. They moved in second, another discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So, the donations remain the same. Now, let's talk about the contracts. Our current contracts, fifteen thousand dollars for the fire company. Ten thousand for UPMC, what we did last year. Correct?
Right. We only have one contract, that's with York Springs.
Yeah.
And we have the, um, ambulance contract with UPMC. And this is a three, we had three years, we just, it's twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three. And we did ten thousand a year for those three years. Payable in two five-thousand-dollar installments.
Okay. I, I'll make a motion. We leave the UPMC contract with ten thousand and increase York Springs to twenty thousand.
I, I was, I was thinking the same thing, because I was looking back. It's been fifteen since two thousand and nineteen. And, you know, I would concur that we raise it to twenty.
Okay, so that's the motion. Is that a second?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, with the motion?
Well, now, you help.
The motion is to increase York Springs from fifteen to twenty, leave UPMC at ten thousand.
And how long of a contract do you want with UPMC?
Five years. Well, it's five years is what, what agreement that he gave us.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Just as a point of information, if you look at that fifty-one thousand dollars, that is twelve percent of the EIT that we collect in this township. So, I, I think, I think that's a fair, I, I think that's a fair number for us to donate back to our organizations. Okay?
So, is that coming out of the general fund, the donations, rather than the?
Yes.
APR?
Well.
What was it, the?
It, it has.
ARP?
It has been coming out of that.
Okay.
What about the other two fire companies?
They, they are part of the donations that we leave, that we've left the same. So, there were five thousand for Bendersville, twenty-five hundred for Heilberg, and twelve-five for York Springs.
Okay, now, last year Bendersville is for that.
We denied that last year.
Well, they, when there's something for us.
There's no request, I don't think. I mean.
They, they requested an additional amount, and we decided not to. It is what, what's last year.
So, it's the five.
Yep.
Okay.
But you increased it for one fire company, but not the other two?
That's correct.
We increased the.
The contract.
Contract. We did not increase any donations.
The next item is knowledge appointment date of April first, twenty twenty-four for Middle Department Inspection Agency.
Okay, we sent the letter, and.
Yeah.
We're in business.
The other old business, new business, acknowledged Roxy, Roxy Sobel's tax collector recertification, so if she's notified us, she's recertified.
Well, yeah, the state actually notified us.
Okay.
And this is stats.
Okay, thank you. Okay, CD maturing, we have one that matured on April twelfth, twenty-four. We have to make a decision what to do with that, this fund.
Did you miss line five in Old Business?
No, I just went over that.
What, what's the middle department?
The Inspection Agency.
Is taking over for Wilbur. Wilbur has retired.
Okay, so we have a hundred and fifty thousand dollar CD that came due, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Tomorrow, it.
Tomorrow.
It actually matures. So, we will get that interest money tomorrow.
Okay, so.
Well, so, over there in Dillsburg, Members First is offering, I think it's five-point-one for eight months.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at these rates here. Nothing, there's nothing here like that. Okay, we have.
Wonder how often they update them. These, you know? We just printed this today.
Okay.
What lengths were you thinking of?
Well, there's, okay, there's a twelve-month here for Members First for five percent. If I'm reading this right. No, that's, that's. What about Adams? These are Adams County National. These are the little.
What's the existing rate?
We were, the one was, it was five, five and a quarter. Let me just, just.
It was five point?
That's on you.
Yeah, it's five percent.
And you gotta move because of the money.
It, it matured, yes.
No, 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 that's not right. They're not offering you, what is it? What's the existing people offering?
Yeah, what, what did they offer us? Pat, Dan, did he come back with a number?
Five-point-one.
Five point.
For one year.
Five point one?
Yeah.
Per year? I mean, I, I mean, I saw the same thing at Members First, you know, five percent.
They're a lot simpler to deal with. You get a statement to tell you how much interest you have, instead of, well, there's many words on a four statement, four-page statement that you can't put down on paper.
That, that's eight months, though. I mean, is that a year or eight? Have you talked, have you talked to them? I haven't called them.
To Dan or Members First?
Members First.
No, I did not.
Okay.
I just saw the sign.
Now, I, you know, as you guys think we need to make a decision tonight, I think we should call and see what we can do, make a decision next month. I mean, money will go into your, the money market. That's where it's at now, correct? After it matures?
It, it will, yes. So, the invest, at least they have an investment.
Correct.
That's fine with me.
Okay. Okay. We will table that till next month, and get some rates, and we'll make a decision in next month. Okay? I, I think we should look over the terms, and I'll help you, Pat. I'll call, I'll make some phone calls. Okay? Okay. Discussion approved settlement agreement with Christopher M. Miller, Heather M. Miller, and Sam Wakers for zoning hearing board matter in Adams County Building Code Board of Appeals Matter.
Okay, so this is as we've been discussing, uh, the settlement agreement to resolve the zoning issue and building hood issue. It'll resolve the Commonwealth Court Appeals that were filed by the Millers to the common, Court of Common Pleas Judge's decision. And facing the township in exchange for them stopping their appeals and just simply letting the violation stand as determined by the judge, uh, will not seek the monetary fines that we were seeking at the Magister of the. uh, will not seek the monetary fines that we were seeking at the Magister of District Judge, which would have been, um, for three days, allegations of five-hundred dollars each.
One thing I think's gotta be added to that, too. They got that stupid letter banning me from the property. As long as the plan is still open, I have the right to enter that property. And I'm tired of state cops coming to my house when they call and complain. I wanted to cease and desist, calling the cops.
That's very, I mean, I think you are, I think that's a good idea.
Well, I, I mean, I, I don't think you can tell somebody they can't call the state cops.
Well, no, they can call them, but I have the right to be on that property at, during regular business hours.
Maybe it's like a right reason you would.
That's right.
I mean, that, that's part of your job.
That's part of it, and it's in the salvo, and it's on the building permits.
So I don't know why we need to, that part of the agreement, I don't know that it's any different than what we already have, though, is what I'm saying.
Well, they issued a letter saying I can't enter their property.
But, it, that's a separate matter, isn't it? I mean, I think the agreement, the settlement, but I.
It, it doesn't directly deal with it, no. Uh, because it's not addressing their land development plan.
Okay.
I can speak with it separately. Are they seeking any type of approvals?
No, they just harassed me.
So do we need to table this until you get that rectified and corrected, or add?
Well, you could approve it contingent upon that change, that if they agree with it, we don't have to come back to it next month.
Okay. I will make a motion, we approve the settlement agreement contingent, contingent upon the approval of the addition of the harassment of Gus, that when he visits the property.
I'll second. Can we be a little more clear with what exactly I'm gonna say?
Okay.
Just, just so I, because if I say it like that, I'm assuming they won't appreciate it. Right, Paul? Uh, it just simply that, that.
That they, they acknowledge the township has a right to inspect the property.
Yes, pursuant to different notices and, right, you know, will not call the cops as long as he's pursuing his official duty.
Okay. Is that, is that clear enough?
Yes.
Okay.
Right.
Uh, that's the motion, or a second?
Oh, I'll second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I thought Paul seconded, Jeff seconded.
Did you second it the first time?
Did you make the motion?
I made the motion.
Yeah, sorry, seconded it.
Okay.
Sorry.
Yeah, all right.
Your Adams, your Adams tax for open house invitation. They have an open house invited us to come, so if we want to come, we just need to let Pat know, so they can be aware, okay?
Okay, subdivision's land development, Scott Barnhart with JBI.
Good evening.
Your attorney, finally.
I'll be brief as, as I can. Um, we talked to Gus, I guess, a couple weeks ago, met at our site when we had our pre-con for the MPDS permit. He asked us to come by and just fill everybody in as far as where we are. So I'm here tonight with Paul Menegar, attorney, his attorney.
Could you speak up a little bit, because you're facing that, I'm sorry.
I do have.
I'm sorry.
Uh, where we are currently is, we did receive comment back, I think you guys are aware, from PENDOT as of recent. They do not want to do a scoping meeting, they actually issued their determination, if you want to call it that, via email. So what we submitted to them, we did get some direction back. Basically, they're saying that they're not looking for anything off-site. What we submitted to them seems adequate. We still have to do an HOP filing. We have to file and obtain that probably occupancy permit, but at least what we're proposing and what they understand or would be, we're in line with. There are two comments by Andrew Merkel. One dealt with clear-cutting of the trees down on Fifteenth. I'm not quite sure why he thinks we're clear-cutting any trees, we're not gonna clear-cut any trees. So that one's a simple question. Uh, the other one, he had a comment about the intersection, forgive me, I'm bad with room names, down where the Rudders is, where Old Harrisburg runs into there. It's about three-point-nine miles away, so it's a little off-site, but that being said, he had a question, he thought that intersection had, in his words, kind of a high frequency of accidents. We did look back five years, and there's been one accident of a car heading south onto Old Harrisburg, coming out of that intersection. Now, there have been other accidents on northbound Old Harrisburg, from across the street and so forth, but as far as vehicles coming out of Old Harrisburg heading south, there's only been one accident in the last five years. We plan on giving Andrew a call, though, and talking about that, and see what his concerns are, if there's something that we're missing. So that, that's kind of it on PENDOT. Uh, forgive me, my engineer's not here tonight, he had some major surgery last week. He'll be back in the fold in about a week or two. That being said, we are having a little issue with getting our stormwater design done. When we met on site for the pre-con a couple weeks ago, the Adams County Conservation District lady, and her name escapes me, she mentioned that all of the MRC designs now, the managed release concept designs, are being funneled up to DEP. That makes me cringe in my sleep, because it's an eight-month review at a minimum. I'm dealing with a joint, joint permit right now with DEP, it's been sixteen months, they don't act quickly. So what we're trying to do is get some supplementary infiltration testing done. I have a, a group that's coming out on Monday, weather permitting, to see if we can find something else. And, and basically, the problem that we're having, the soils are bad, everybody kind of knows that. There's a limiting zone, we have a limiting zone, you can't infiltrate, thus the managed release concept. So if we can find something that would allow us to do, I'm gonna call it a normal infiltration, we still have to do our stormwater, we still have to design a prior ordinance, but it leaves DEP out of it. So that's what I'm trying to figure out there. I'm also talking to a geotechnical engineer to ask some questions about slopes that we would wind up with, and make sure that everything's going to be proper. We're gonna do some slope testing and some shear testing to make sure what we're proposing is adequate. As far as the internal plans to the site, this is a big investment for JBI. We put a million dollars, no exaggeration, into the existing building already. We've got a proposed three-million-dollar donor going behind it. All total will be at about five or six million dollars for this property. It takes us a little while to go through things internally, as far as building location, size, shape, and I'm talking, those one now, that's part of the land development plan. I think we've got that narrowed down. Um, unfortunately, what I thought we were gonna wind up with, as far as a yard, when we're all said and done, isn't as big as I want it to be. And that's why we're talking about slopes and infiltration, because that pond at the lower part of the hill, it may eat into even more of that yard, depending on the stormwater design. So, that being said, we're going through all of that. Uh, we had, as you know, we have an MPDS permit to fill, we got that a few months ago. Uh, we were hoping to have things filed with you in that ninety-day period process, but waiting on PENDOT to get some stuff back to us internally, it's just taking a little longer. I did talk to our engineer, Dave, I, I think that Paul and, and your solicitor had a conversation about trying to get some things submitted here over the next month or two. It really depends on what kind of results I get next week, as far as the infiltration testing. If I get something that's favorable, and we can run with it, I can't promise you I'll have something by March twenty-seventh, but we will try to get it in as soon as we can.
May twenty-seventh?
I'm sorry, May twenty-seventh. Um, does anybody have any questions? We are working furiously on it, these types of things take time, though.
If the infiltration doesn't meet what you want, does DEP then still have to design the stormwater?
Well, well, we designed the stormwater, you know, you guys reviewed it.
It had to go to?
Yeah, another reason, and maybe, uh, maybe Scott can elaborate, but it's our understanding that all MRCs have to be reviewed by DEP. I'm not opposed to MRCs, I'm opposed to waiting eight months to a year to get a permit.
Oh, I get it.
So I'm trying to find a way that still is proper, meet your ordinance, would be able to be approved by everybody, but not, not that type of concept, that's, that's what we're trying to do. Anybody else?
You, you?
Everything you said is correct.
Okay.
So I, I guess, what we wanted to make sure is, we want to be good tenants of the municipality. We want to start with the right foot, and we try to meet these requests that you've had, as far as following this plan within ninety days, can't do it. We sent over, I think, a, uh, another request, if you want to put it that way, Gus, to extend it. Uh, we picked a date, don't, Paul, we, I think it was August. We picked that date somewhat arbitrarily, because I don't want to ask again, if I want to put it that way. We didn't really hear back, but we were asked to come explain, so we didn't know if you wanted to go ahead and move forward with that, you know, extension, if you want to put it that way, while we're working on things, or if you had something else in mind.
So basically, the agreement that we signed, that said you guys can go ahead and start excavating, it had ninety days, which expired?
April the ninth.
Yeah, um, and so they're basically asking for an extension.
Under the same conditions and expectations?
Correct, yes.
Yeah.
Well, let me point out, the, the planning commission, when they discussed it, they asked for approval till August, and the planning commission gave them thirty days. Now, it's your decision, but that's totally unrealistic, they'll never make it.
But we also didn't know now, I mean, didn't know then.
Well, that's why we brought them in.
Still a board's decision, not the planning commission.
Yeah, I get it.
Yeah, we appreciate the consideration, because I was involved in negotiations with your solicitor, and it was very amicable and very cooperative. Uh, the township had actually thrown out, uh, doing a hundred-and-eighty days. Scott and I talked, and we wanted to kind of, we were anxious to get going, we really thought ninety was realistic, and then we're, why did we do that? So we make mistakes here, sometimes that was a mistake, uh, but there is a good faith effort to move forward, try to get these things done, it just becomes very complicated to get anything done at the state anymore.
Understood.
And we also did not, the other thing we talked about, but we, we thought it would be unproductive, would be just to walk in with a plan. We didn't want to have an unrealistic plan, a bad plan, a poorly developed plan. We thought we'd be better to be candid about our challenges and get a reasonable extension.
Okay, so the extension would be, we have a date, or just?
They have a, the date they gave me on the paperwork was August, I don't have the exact date, but it was in August.
I can't remember the date either, but, yeah, yes.
Does it come inside with, like, the planning commission, or is it just a date?
I will say it was just calendar days.
Yeah.
I, I can verify it.
Do you have a copy of that somewhere?
I got it on my desk.
You can still set it at whatever date the board wants to set it at, right?
I understand that, it'd be nice if we had a group of the document, that the date on, we had to use that day.
I'm okay with whatever the date was, unless you might try and find?
I am, I am, too.
Yeah, yeah.
But planning commission meets what day?
The fourth Monday in a month.
So in August, the fourth Monday, we put these at twenty-sixth. I mean, how early before that do you like the plans in?
Let, let me comment on that before you go too far.
Okay.
I, I'm getting ready to say that, that's when we would file, because I think you have, what, twenty-eight days that you require prior to the planning commission. So what I don't want to do is have you guys say, yes, get it filed by this day, but really, in your minds, you think a month earlier. Well, what I'm asking for is that filing date, and then we would come to the following month for the planning, once it's filed.
Okay.
That's what I was saying, so you know, it's twenty-eight days in advance?
Well, thirty days is what we do.
Okay.
So perhaps we set the extension request for August twenty-sixth, and it would be considered at the September meeting?
Yes, correct.
I'll make a motion, we grant the extension of the JBI agreement to August twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-four.
I just do the twenty-third, because technically, the fourth Monday in September is the twenty-third.
I'm fine with that.
So I amend my motion to August twentieth, grant the extension to August twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four.
About twentieth, so you got, so you know you have thirty days, it's been an exact thirty days.
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
I get the claim of August twenty-twenty-four. You're second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for the table, I've been in this business thirty years, nobody has ever had a table set up for me in front of our team line, so thank you, I appreciate that.
Well, now we know where to go, Rob.
Thank you.
Shouldn't they make you wait till?
Hey, thanks for coming.
Thank you, thank you.
Goodbye.
Thank you.
Okay. The other old business. Uh, before we move on, I'd, I'd like to talk about the ordinance a little bit, the fire prevention. We tabled it, but I, I'd like to make a motion, we send the ordinance back to the planning commission with the concerns that we heard tonight. You're second to that.
I'll second.
Okay, it's moved in second to send the ordinance back for the planning commission to review. Okay?
Okay.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Who seconded that?
I did.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, uh, write no request. March seventh, twenty-four, Cog Kozlanski, active solar permits. March eighteenth, twenty-four, Marie de Gange, any and all invoices for professional services rendered and submitted by Saul and Hughes for the month of February twenty-twenty-four. March eighteenth, twenty-four, Marie de Gange, any and all invoices for professional services rendered and submitted by Share a Design Group for the month of February twenty-four. March twenty-sixth, John Clausen, correspondence regarding seventy-two fifty Old Harrisburg Road. March twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-four, Marie de Gange, grant application, transmittal correspondence to ACCD and DEP. Okay, upcoming meetings are the Huntington Township Planning Commission on the twenty-second of April at seven. Our next meeting is May ninth at seven. Narima meeting is scheduled for June fifth at six PM here. Paulie, comment, yes?
My name's Florence Ford, I spoke with you on the phone, I just wanted to thank you.
You're welcome.
For taking care of that, you too, Mr. King, I, I really appreciate it, it's just been, it's like those things that just get under your skin. But when you were talking about the, um, wait, 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 I'm, I'm losing my train of thought. Oh, on your CD maturing, and you're looking at rates? Have you looked into Pliggett, the Pennsylvania local government?
We have not done that.
Investment trust?
We did that years ago, but we haven't really done that since I've been.
Take a look at them, because they're doing, at their prime, they're doing five-point-four-four, and you're not tied in, so you're not tied in, you don't have to keep the money there for eight months, or here. If you want to move money in and out of that, you can. So I would just suggest you check them.
Thank you for that.
Okay, thanks.
I have my hand up, and you didn't see it, but when you were discussing about the cease and desist that Gus requires on that letter about trespassing on the property owner's, uh, property, that, I was at one of the hearings where a complaint to the DA was put in for him, for Gus trespassing on a Saturday onto that property and going in a building. And that's probably their concern, actually. So I, I would like you to clarify, when Gus, in his position as a zoning and permit officer, when is he permitted to go on a property? I mean, it, especially these people didn't live there, so why can't he call them and set up an appointment? Could you just confirm what his duties are, and where, like, he had indicated, it's Monday through Friday, whenever he's working during business hours?
There's a lot of statutes of disloyal to explain when he can go in, and when is he allowed, um. I mean, I, I don't know if I have time to, the board wants me to sit here and explain in detail.
I'm sorry.
Explain in detail how that works, I'll leave it up to you. I mean, generally, under the municipality's planning code, the subdivision land development ordinance, zoning ordinance, if, especially as a zoning officer, if they have belief that the property is being used improperly for zoning, he can go and make representation. Now, they, at one point, did issue, tell them not to come onto the property.